Good morning. This is the organizational meeting of the Byron Hills Board of Education. It's Tuesday, July 5th, 2016. Please join me in the Pledge of Allegiance.
The Pledge of Allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Oh, good morning. This is a brief meeting for me, and then the new president, once he's elected or she, will take over at that point. First order of business is to swear in our two new board members. I'll start with Mia. If you would rise, raise your right hand, and you have the oath of office.
I do solemnly swear that I will support the Constitution of the United States and the Constitution of the State of New York, and that I will faithfully discharge the duties of the Office of Byron Hills School District Board of Education member for the term of three years according to the best of my ability.
Thank you. I need you to sign that. Next, Lara.
I do solemnly swear that I will support the Constitution of the United States and the Constitution of the State of New York, and that I will faithfully discharge the duties of the Office of Byron Hills School District Board of Education member for the term of three years according to the best of my ability.
Congratulations.
Welcome.
Welcome to public life. Our next order of business is to select a Board of Education president for the 2016-17 school year.
I'll nominate Brett Summers.
Second.
Move the nominations to be closed.
I need a second on that.
Second.
All in favor of closing nominations? All in favor of Brett for president? Congratulations.
Thank you.
And I'll do the else afterwards. Now for the Office of Vice President.
I'll nominate Scott Weedy.
Second. Move the nominations to be closed.
Second on the closing nominations.
All in favor of closing nominations? All in favor of Scott for Vice President? Congratulations. Do we have the oath of office?
I do solemnly swear or affirm that I will support the Constitution of the United States and the Constitution of the State of New York, and that I will faithfully discharge the duties of the Office of Byron Hills School District Board of Education president for the term of one year according to the best of my ability.
I do solemnly swear that I will support the Constitution of the United States and the Constitution of the State of New York, and that I will faithfully discharge the duties of the Office of Byron Hills School District Board of Education Vice President for the term of one year according to the best of my ability.
Congratulations. Congratulations.
Well, thank you, everybody. I really, truly appreciate your support, and I, Scott, I'm really looking forward to this year sort of collaborating with you.
Likewise.
And I am also likewise very excited to have Mia and Lara joining us. I hope it's everything that you expected and more, and not as bad as you anticipated.
Thank you.
But truly, there are no questions that you should feel shy about asking because it really is helpful to the rest of the board to have sometimes discussions on things that we assume we all think the same way about, but sometimes questions from new board members really point out that there's growth in every item, so feel free to chime in at any time. With that, may I have a motion to adopt today's agenda?
Motion.
Second.
May I have a motion to adopt tonight's consent agenda? Do we have a consent here? Typical. Let's do this one by one. Motion to adopt item six in the agenda for the organizational appointments by the Board for the 16-17 school year.
I'll move that.
We have a second?
Second.
Any discussion, questions? Huge, long list every year, and these things can be a little intimidating to new board members to figure out what everybody is, but if you have any questions today or going forward, feel free to ask. Motion on the table, all in favor? Item seven on the agenda, readoption of all Board policies. May I have a motion to readopt all Board policies and specifically including policy 2160, School District Officer and Employee Code of Ethics, policy 6240 Investments, policy 6700 Purchasing, and policy 6700 are the purchasing regulation for the 2016-17 school year?
So moved.
A second.
Any questions about the policies that we're readopting? All in favor? Now we have two resolutions that are pretty standard form. May I have a motion to approve both resolutions listed under item eight on the agenda resolution, the first being the resolution approving designation of Board of Ed members to appoint impartial hearing officers for special ed meetings effective July 1, 2016, and a resolution authorizing settlement by the Director of Special Services in consultation with the Superintendent of Schools of due process claims effective July 1, 2016.
So moved.
Second.
Any questions on those? All in favor? Are there any comments from anybody in the public on matters not on the agenda? And hearing none, we move to, oh, there's our consent agenda. May I have a motion to adopt the consent agenda for personnel items and for business items and for special services?
So moved.
Wait, a second?
Second.
All in favor? And that brings us to item 14, unfinished business, the veterans' tax exemption. And for this, I'll just turn it over to the superintendent. Bill, you're going to let us know why this is on our unfinished agenda.
Yeah, I put this on the agenda because when I was looking at the minutes from the last meeting, I recognized that we tabled it specifically until the next ordinary business meeting, which might be a little vague, but probably would be our August meeting, and we're not going to have any more information in August than we have right now. And furthermore, the first August meeting back, there's a lot of other things that we're concentrating on. We have to do the building tour, things like that. And who knows what there'll be to report to you about the startup of schools. So I thought it'd be wiser to put it off to one of the two September meetings, and I'll propose the specific date after I have a chance to look at how the agendas are set up. But that's all right with everybody?
Yeah. I will move to postpone the consideration of 14-1 indefinitely. Come back, you can come back.
Indefinitely meeting until I can find it.
You know, one thing I just want to say, like, then over the summer in the board packet, will you include Greg's presentation again, just really for refresh for all of us and for Lara, Mia?
Yeah, good idea.
Yeah, and, you know, I know that when Greg, you presented that, Mia, you were in the audience at the meeting, Lara wasn't at the meeting, so really, one of the reasons to put this off is to give you all, you know, an opportunity to get your feet under you and then let us know when you feel comfortable that you have enough information and when you want to put this back on the agenda. But we look to do this sometime in the, you said indefinitely, Ira.
Yeah, indefinitely. The superintendent will tell us when he has the information necessary, then we can put it back on the agendas. That means we're never going to do it just yet.
Oh, it'll definitely.
Yeah, that's all. Just pending advice from the superintendent.
And just, you know, I know board members don't typically re-watch themselves on TV, but there was a lot of content, and not just for me and Lara, it might be useful to remember that that's available to any of you if you want to look at those numbers again. Is there consensus that the Board wants to put this off until the superintendent recommends we, you know, are ready to consider it again?
Well, there was a motion, and everybody wanted to second it.
I'll second that.
Okay. All in favor of the motion? Thank you. So that brings us to new business, and which we don't have anything on our agenda for today for new business, so.
Right, Brett? The one thing, Dr. Donahue, I ask you, there was members of the community that had brought that to your attention. Has there been any communication on the veterans? Sorry to stay on that any longer.
Yeah, yeah, no, no.
I just want to make sure that we're communicating with those that brought it to our attention that, you know, the status.
Yeah, the person who's been in touch with me is the commander of the Veterans Association in our MOC.
VFW.
VFW, thanks. And he has been in touch, and I think he's going to get back in touch this week.
Okay, great. Thanks. Sorry.
No, it's a good point. It's a good point. So, staff reports. Dr. Donahue, you're up.
Yeah, not a formal report, just want to let you know that the year ended well. I think the graduations were all great events, and in particular, I thought the high school graduation was one of the most meaningful level ever. That might be partly because Chris was retiring, and it might be the impact of the new people in the arts, but an hour and 10 minutes, which is our tradition, but it went off without a hitch and seemed particularly meaningful, so that was nice. Things ended well, and we look forward to starting a new year. We're doing a lot of work this summer to get ready, looking forward to a new high school principal, two new assistant principals at the high school, and tomorrow, the administration goes on retreat, and we'll spend two days working on our goals. And in particular, we're doing follow-up to the goals that were based on essential questions. If you recall, in October last year, we presented to you a very different approach to goals, and we'll be following up on that and getting back to you again in the fall, and we're excited about that. That's it for me.
Thank you.
Thank you, Brett.
Greg, got a report for us?
Very brief report. Last time, I gave just an oral report on our activities for summer work for Steve and his crew. It's attached in Board docs, specifically what that is. Use it as a kind of a memory jogger for all of us, and especially as a reminder to come to our tour. Board members are cordially invited at the end of the summer to visit the buildings, and we'll be going around visiting all the buildings. And specifically, I try to focus on these activities that were new and different for the buildings, so you can see some of the changes and improvements to our buildings. Plus, on our tour, we go anywhere the board members would like to see, and we always look at a couple of classrooms in each building as well. So I invite you all, keep that on your calendar. I know it was included in Board docs. I don't know if the specific date is August 30th or something around there.
Janine will make sure everybody's got a calendar.
But it's worthwhile to see all the work, and I know all the crew appreciate seeing the board members out there looking and appreciating the work that hasn't been done yet, but will be by the time we go on our tour.
For the new board members, I mentioned that was a highlight for my year last year. It was a lot of fun, and it's enjoyable. The one question for you, Greg, you know, seeing the list, not being construction-oriented, are any of those projects concerning timelines? They all seem, it didn't seem like there was anything, maybe the cooling system or something?
As soon, no, as soon as you knock a wall down or do something, that's a modification, it's always a concern, because it's like any remodeling, there's always unknowns when you do something. As an example, let's say, call it the coffee shop at the high school. Since we looked at it, now we find that there's asbestos tile under the carpeting, and that's to be removed now. So those are the type of things that, once you start to pull things apart, you say, uh-oh, let's, we have to do this right. So those are the kind of things that are always a concern when you go to make a modification. A lot of things we do are going to be related to lighting and carbon monoxide detectors, which the Board should be aware of and know how they work and where they are. Those are more plug-in type devices, and I'm not concerned about those things being ready.
Will we can, everything's on track for getting the bus garage put back together as soon as possible?
We're supposed to be in the old building by the first week in August, and that's still what the target is. So that will be ready for the end of August, knowing how contractors and schedules slide.
Okay. Thank you.
And that'll obviously be a feature of the tour as well.
Any other questions for Greg? Tim?
Sure. In my section of the packet, you have a presentation of preliminary results on the Regents exams from June. We administer eight Regents exams. I'll just give you a brief summary, and I'll give you a full analysis in the fall when I give my assessment report. But the results were fairly extraordinary. We had, the passing rate on all eight exams are in the mid-to-high 90s, and the average on all the exams are in the 80s and 90s, maybe in the high 80s and 90s for average score on the Regents exams. Two things to point out that are noteworthy, it was our first administration of the Common Core English Regents exam, so that was phased in. This was the last administration to buy into it, and we had 99.5% passing rate on that. And what is extraordinary as well is Level 5, which is the scale score of 85 to 100, that 93% of our students score at that rate, and that's pretty phenomenal. We were confident that, we'd always been teaching Common Core-type English, teaching kids understanding and meaning and depth of knowledge, until you see some validation through some form of assessment, you don't really know. But we did feel fairly confident in the results, but that was exceeded our expectation for a first administration.
So I remember for math, when the Common Core Regents was introduced, there were some grades that you had to do both, an old and a new. There wasn't this for English, there wasn't the old Regents with the Common Core?
We had already done that experience. We had the option, because we used to give it in 10th grade, the Regents exam, and now we do it in 11th grade. So last year would have been the option, but we were transitioning from 10 to 11, so we did not have our students' tests last year, so we didn't have that option this year in the LA. But we did have it in math and the geometry, we had the option to take both.
So they obviously did really well, so consensus was they were ready for it?
They were ready.
Okay.
Yeah. So that was a calculated risk to put it off for a year, but certainly proved the right risk.
Yeah, we've done a lot of analysis ahead of time in terms of Common Core-type questions, and our kids were scoring well on those, the tests we were integrating into our local assessments, so we felt fairly confident. But to see that result at the end on a high-stakes test was good for us.
One question, so the overall passing rate on all the exams were amazing, and the results overall were amazing. One of the things that surprised me is when you look at tests versus tests against each other, there was a very different distribution of fives versus fours versus threes within the passing. Is that typical in your experience? Does that mean anything at the end of the day in terms of alignment with the Regents of the individual classes, or is it somewhat meaningless? What do you think about that?
Across Regents exams, these tests are not aligned. They hadn't in the past even been aligned within, say, mathematics, they weren't really aligned to the math tests in the middle school. I think the state is working on getting that better, so that the ELA tests in the middle school align to the Regents, and the math tests in the middle school align to the Regents.
But they're all scaled though, right?
They're all scaled, so they're scale within. So you see, I mean, these results are very typical. When I do my analysis in the fall, I'll do a comparison from past years. You know, you take a look at any of these, the earth science, the biology, or the chemistry, the results are consistent from year to year. Rarely see the fluctuation.
I guess you have different, there's different populations of people taking each test.
There's different populations, and the tests are designed differently. You know, when we look at the chemistry, for example, we typically see that spread with our students.
Or geometry had a very different spread.
That has a very different spread than the algebra. And pointing out the Common Core algebra, that Level 5% at 73% scoring Level 5 was extraordinarily high compared to the previous two administrations. We went from 15% to 30% to 73% scoring at that 85 to 100. And it's very typical that as we perform on the tests and we see the way the tests are designed, our students do better over time, once we learn the test design and format. With the algebra test, they continue to play with the test. The test has not been the same from year to year, so those results, we're trying to figure out, you know, the feel of the test yet, but it does show that there is a shift. If you recall, with the Common Core, they implemented K through 8 all at one time. So we started new testing in 8th grade on a new curriculum that kids had for one year. So we're starting to see kids going through the Common Core changes in our local curriculum over the past three years now, getting to the high schools. So I have a feeling that's playing into it as well, as kids are exposed to more Common Core material over time.
So, Tim, to follow up on Scott's question, to help particularly audience members, if I'm a junior, and I just took the English and I got a 90, and I just took the US History and I got an 80, am I necessarily better in English than in US History?
The answer would be no.
Right. Which is a little scary, actually, because when outsiders look at these scores on transcripts, they're thinking, well, you did better in English than you did in US History, but it's not the case. No.
The last thing I mentioned is, I know you'll give us more feedback on it, but geometry, not only for my children, but from others, seemed to be a very difficult exam this year. Was that?
That was the feedback from the teachers. They thought it was an unusual exam, in the sense that there was emphasis in areas that weren't emphasized previously and that didn't seem to be emphasized in the curriculum outlines. So we were confused by this test, to say the least.
My, one of my kids mentioned it, and actually, one of their friends mentioned it, and I suppose it was kind of interesting. There's a big curve, I guess, on exam too.
Right, probably.
That's probably the reason why I heard.
Right.
I don't know if what I'm hearing is actually what happened, though.
I get that.
That was accurate.
Any other questions for Tim before we move on?
Okay, 16.4. Jen, you have a report for us this morning?
Just a hiring update. You'll probably see less than a dozen new hires on the August agenda. Those are some remaining open positions that we have. We still have to appoint our high school assistant principal and psychologist at the middle school, a special educator at the middle school. We're progressing pretty well with all of those, and should have names for you on that agenda. You'll see some teacher aide positions on that agenda also. You recall that we reduced four aides at Coman Hill, and we did not rehire for those positions. However, we have had quite a few aides who have taken teaching positions and have resigned over the past few months, so we'll be filling those positions. That's what you'll be seeing. And I think for HR, we'll be spending a lot of our time with transition plans over the summer, helping people acclimate to their new jobs, director and supervisor of transportation, and the high school, of course. So we have our work cut out for us.
And just to follow up on Jen's point, we've had the fortune in recent years of being able to hire certified teachers as aides. As the market changes, that may become more difficult, but it's been good for us in two ways. You know, the aides in the classroom are very capable of assisting the teachers and assisting the students. And I think from an HR point of view, it's a good thing if somebody is motivated and ambitious to go on to another job rather than stay in the same position for many, many years here, so.
Two of our former aides just became teaching fellows, and it's good for us to see that.
Were they hired internal or?
No, they were hired at a district.
So is the market just not being as tuned into this? Is it a pretty tight market right now?
Since 2008, it's been, there's been very little hiring, it's been very difficult to get a teaching job.
Thank you, Jen.
Thanks.
And that brings us to 17 on our agenda, President's Report, and I can report that nothing new has happened as the last 20 minutes of my presidency. Well done. Committees, board members, any updates from anybody since we've last met? I want to ask Lara and Mia about orientation. Have you had an opportunity to see the policy on new board member orientation and get references? A lot of material that, you know, you should be becoming familiar with or have, or resources at least, and then maybe meetings with administrators? Is that in the works or planned?
Actually, today. We have several.
Yep, they both met with me already.
Yes.
And then today, they'll meet with the assistant superintendents. And Janine's been sending them information about school board association courses and materials.
Yeah, it's really a long learning curve, and my estimation, or my only experience is, you know, after about a year and a half, then you start to feel, because you've seen things now a couple of times, and a pattern kind of emerges in the year. But again, the invitation to ask anybody questions is there. Mia, you went to the West Putt orientation designed to get you through the first 90 days?
Yep, it was great. It was very informative, a lot of new information, but I didn't have any good reading materials.
Good. Yes?
The one point I would like to raise of the new board members is the one issue that sometimes gets new board members in trouble, small t, is distinguishing when they're acting as parents and when they're acting as board members. And that can be tricky. So to these.
They talked about that a lot at the new board meeting.
It is a significant issue that can cause new board members unnecessary difficulties. So if you do have issues that arise on that point, you really should speak to another board member. You can always speak to Dr. Donahue or whatever, but it's important that you get that right because it not only reflects on you when you get it wrong, it reflects on the whole board and the way we operate as a board. So to the extent you have issues, really, there is no such thing as a foolish question thrown on that topic. We want you to have a high comfort level in the way you carry yourself as a board member, so feel free to ask questions on that, but it is an important point.
Thanks.
Thanks, Ira. So that brings us to committee assignments, unless anybody else has anything else they want to report since our last meeting. There is in the packet a list of last year's committee assignments, and I would invite anybody to let me know what your preferences are, and it would be great if you could do, you know, top three and in the order of your, you know, most interested, you know, kind of thing. And I also invite discussion now on whether anybody thinks that there are any committee assignments or liaison positions listed there that maybe we can do away with, or new ones that we might want to consider adding.
I had a thought. I'm appointed to the district-wide emergency safety team. I was last year, and I see that I am again this year. And so I was wondering, is that maybe something that we should put on?
This year's blank right now, right?
This year's blank. Nobody's been appointed anything this year.
We just approved it on consent, so yes.
Oh, to that comment. Oh.
Yeah, no, so I'm just throwing it out there. Should this position be something, since it is a board member, that is going to be on this district-wide emergency safety team each year? Maybe it should be a committee position?
Yeah, or at least an appointment on the committee list.
Exactly, even if it's not a committee, if it's, right, just to make sure that it's covered every year.
What's that involve?
Last year, it was a meeting.
Right, a meeting to go over the new district emergency response plan, and should we make any changes to it, that person will serve on that committee.
So you have to have a board member on that committee?
It was new last year, that part of it.
It does make sense that we put it on the list because it's, you know, this is a list of board member assignments.
Right, just an issue that it's always covered and.
That's a good point. So we'll add that to the list. Any other suggestions for adds or deletes on that list? I had asked Robin in between meetings whether we thought the communications committee should continue to exist like this. It's been busier in some years than in others, but Robin, you had a view on that?
My thought was, I think it's an important committee, even though some years it's not as busy. It was the committee that was spearheading the budget information committee. It's the one that looks at the.
It's the one that looks at the calendar, that looks at the budget brochure, that talks about, not spectrum really, it wasn't really spectrum, but it could end up.
It has talked about spectrum in the past, yeah.
It could end up taking on different roles if we need to talk about it more from a public relations view. You know, I don't know, there's, you know, a bunch of different avenues it could take.
Okay.
But I think it's important, whether it evolves a little bit is, you know, something that can be decided, but.
Okay. And just to second that, even though we only meet typically one time, the feedback is helpful, particularly with the budget brochure.
Even the calendar.
And the calendar, sure.
A couple of years ago, it really developed.
Okay, all right. So again, I invite everybody to let me know what their interests are.
Yeah, sorry, I have one question.
Yep.
The health advisory committee, it consists of.
Albin was on that committee, and he attended, there's mandatory meetings, I want to say four times a year of the health advisory committee. I think four times a year, once each quarter. And how is that going to be run now that we've got, you know, a little bit of a change in responsibilities again from the athletic director, the nurse? Well, it wasn't, the nurse was on it, but she actually wasn't the organizer, so it'll remain pretty much the same.
Rob has given some responsibilities to the athletic trainer and is going to give responsibilities to the assistant, to the athletic director also. So the three of them together will be coordinating that.
And sometimes there are suggested changes to our board policies which in, deal with health-related issues that may come from that committee, then to the policy committee, then to the full board. So, you know, health-related things, and they could touch all kinds of different aspects of our school operations.
Can you say, isn't it required the board members on there? I remember that one Leslie was on there. Was there something about that?
I don't, I don't know. I don't know, before we, you know, consider nixing any of these things, we'll confirm that. I don't believe it's a state regulatory requirement. Sometimes there are, and sometimes there aren't.
When I see that board members are on multiple committees, is that typically what's done?
Yeah, yeah. And I would say that you've heard some of the committees might meet once a year and not have much work to do, but a committee like the policy committee might meet every five weeks for three or four hours at a pop. And I would say that, and I mentioned this during, you know, the panel discussion at the new board members orientation, I have this 30-30-30 sort of rule of thumb. Some board members, their entire board service is preparing for and attending school board meetings, and that's a considerable amount of time, and prep time typically can be even longer than attending the actual meeting. But if you get involved in committees, committees could double that amount of work, so it could be 50% on each. And if you, you know, attend, you know, awards functions and other kinds of things as a school board member, it could, you know, extend that another 30%. So it really varies, the amount of time that you have to commit to board service. The committee work is a big factor in figuring that out.
And I just want to add to that, too. The committees meet at different times. There are some that definitely meet during the days, and there are some that really meet at night if they're like the education foundation or something like that. So you just have to really look at, you know, your personal schedule, too, when you're deciding which committees you'd want to be on, and see which one works within what you're able to do, what you're able to give it.
Okay, thank you so much.
Okay, so that moves us to 17.4, topics for future agendas. Anybody have any topics that they want to put out there that we should consider for future agendas? Hearing none. Our next Board of Ed meeting is August 30th at the district office, 7:30, but we have that walkthrough that I think it'll be 5:00 or 5:30 that I hope everybody can come to.
And the day earlier is when the teachers are back, right?
Right, in the morning of the 30th. We're all invited that morning to, the board president will speak that morning, I believe, and.
Has it now, or will it be a way that we may change?
Usually a couple of board members attend, but you're welcome to, and you'll be pointed out to the faculty. And Lara, Mia, you remember at the last board meeting of the, one teacher from each building was given the sort of teacher of the year award, and those teachers have an opportunity to address all of their colleagues assembled in mass at that 8:30 in the morning event, and that's pretty inspiring from an educator's point of view. All right, with that, communications to the board, none to report. May I have a motion on item 19 to approve the minutes of the Board of Education meeting for June 20?
So moved.
Second?
Second.
Any questions, comments, changes, suggestions for that? All in favor? Thank you very much, Don.
Thank you.
We did not have any executive session items, so may I have a motion to adjourn the organizational meeting?
So moved.
Wait a second. All in favor? Thank you, and everybody have a great summer, and we'll see you at the end of August.